Good evening, I called to order this December fifteenth meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and asked the city secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Light. Here. Councilmember Bart.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you, would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you, and would you please join the city council and me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, let's recognize our sergeant-at-arms tonight, Lieutenant Chris Fish. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight, now we have the first presentation.
Presentation of award from the Center for Digital Government.
Dennis Newman is here, our chief information officer, and Councilmember Montgomery picked this award up for us at a meeting there, and so councilmember, if maybe ask Dennis to explain what the award's about, and then if you would present. Mr. Newman?
Mayor, members of council, the city has received an award from the Center of Digital Government that places Winston-Salem as the number-one city for mid-sized populations in the country for the use of information technology.
Whoa.
Yeah.
Thank you. In my career with the city, beginning going back in the late 1990s, the city won a rather prestigious award, it's called the Global Bangaman Award, and at that time, we combined a number of technologies together and did something that was rather unique with our fire department, and a member from our fire department and from the information technology department traveled to Stockholm, Sweden to receive an award from the king of Sweden for that project. And since then, the city has been recognized by the Center of Digital Government as a top-ten city for twelve years in a row, but this is the first year that we've been recognized as the number-one city. I ask you what's made us different this year than prior years, and what's placed us as the number-one position, and it's not something like we did in 1999, we did not have a standout application that's never been done before, but what we're told from the Center of Digital Government is that it was found in city Winston-Salem that we use technology effectively across all areas of our local government, both in our services to the public through the Internet, as well as in our internal operations. So, I am very proud to receive this award, as should, I think, all the employees of the city Winston-Salem and members of our community.
Wonderful, congratulations. Thank you Dennis, and thank you to all the folks here in IT that helped make this work. Councilmember Montgomery?
If I may just add again to congratulate our staff that worked so hard and diligent in this process, and it's just amazing to look at all of the cities across the country that were considered in this process, and to see Winston-Salem come out as the number-one city, I think that bodes well, it speaks mountains of our staff and the hard work that they put in every day, and it also speaks mountains of the investments that we've made throughout our city in IT, and I think this should be something that should challenge us to continue to move forward, and let's not settle on being number-one.
I like it. Thank you, Councilmember Montgomery, thank you for getting an award for us. Councilmember Burke?
I didn't want to say this, I started letting Mr. Dennis Newman go by and not saying anything. Some years, we used to get number-two award, and I would say, I just don't want to accept any number-two, and I stopped accepting them, and so for us to have number-one, I always felt, as I told those people, as much as we work and how progressive we are with the cities that we're in competition with, we ought to be number-one, so now we're number-one, and I would have accepted that one, Mr. Newman.
Give me no chance. We'll go back to the agenda now, our agenda's comprised of two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda, and as always, the practice of our council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by committee of the city council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a councilmember so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV-13, and it will be replayed on Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of our meeting, are always available online at our city's website, www.cityofws.org, and just watch, click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to remove from consent?
C-12.
Fourteen-C.
Okay.
C-13.
C-12.
C-9-C.
Hang on just a second.
Okay.
Thirteen is Montgomery, and yours is C-9?
C-9-C.
Okay, so your motion on the ballot.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second on the ballot of the consent agenda, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. First one is C-9-C.
Item C-9-C, resolution awarding contract for purchase of turnout gear.
Councilmember Bessie wanted this one.
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Mayor, I think we all strongly support this, this matter was brought to our attention originally by firefighters, it was in the works to have this done prior to the recent OSHA inspections, but I thought it would be important for both members of our fire department and for the public to know that we are acting on this in a substantial way, and thought just a brief explanation of what we're doing would be appropriate.
Okay. Mr. Turner, or Mr. Bates, or Chief Farmer's here, excuse me, yes.
I'd like to say good evening to the mayor, Mayor Protim, councilmembers, thank you for pulling that item for recognition, the firefighters for years have been trying to achieve gaining second sets of gear to be used in firefighting, NFPA changed in 2008, and it started requiring us to have second gear, as well as some other requirements that affected safety, so we've been trying to gain second gear for several years now. It would allow firefighters to have their gear tested annually, advanced checks, and in the event that they have a fire, and their gear is wet or sawed or damaged, they would have a second set of gear to be able to use to continue firefighting. They are excited about this, and staff has worked very hard to make this happen, if you have any specific questions, Chief Stowe's here to answer anything that you may have.
Any questions, Chief Farmer, or Councilmember Taylor?
Comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Chief Stowe, Chief Farmer, I just want to say thank you for bringing this particular item forward, I do serve as the new chairman of public safety, and Councilmember Burke has done this for so long, I know she would agree with my comments, I think, you know, as members of this council, everyone sitting here, even the mayor, we want to make sure that we provide our firefighters with everything they need to be successful with serving our citizens day in and day out, night in and night out, so I wanted to thank you for that, Chief Farmer, you don't want me to say this, but I know this might be one of your last meetings here at this particular city council, we want to thank you, I know you're retiring for everything that you're doing, and even on your way out, you're fighting to make sure that the firefighters have exactly what they need, so thank you again, thank you twice, thank you three times, we really appreciate all your service here for the city of Winston-Salem. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Burke?
Yes, I was going to say indirectly, thank you for what you bring to this city, and that we did help you celebrate your retirement, and it was a very wonderful retirement, those of us who attended, and we were just so pleased, and I said at that particular time, and of course, may I just, with another project, and what I said, though, is that even though Fire Chief Farmer is retiring, just look at him, how young he looks, one of these young and retired.
Smiling.
Yes, and I want you to know, some people may not know it, but he's a very creative musician, and he can write, so he will be bringing other things to this community and other places, and we thank you.
So kind, thank you, Dr. Burke.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Chief Stowe, is there a motion, Mr. Bessie?
Move through.
Second. Motion second, discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Item C-12.
Item C-12, consideration of a design study for the Martin Luther King Jr. Drive-Waltown Street area.
Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, members of the council, I wanted to have this item pulled for, just a brief informational, this item is an $80,000 funding request for a design study, what it'll be is a detailed revitalization plan based on the current market standards for the south Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and Waltown area, and I think all of our areas, we're always challenged on finding new and innovative ways to bring about job creation, economic development, this is one of those areas that I think we can be extremely successful by partnering with the Simon G. Atkins CDC, and I know Ms. Carol Davis is here, if there are questions, and also we'll be partnering with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council and Winston-Salem State University, I may have stolen all of his thunder, but Mr. Page, if there's anything that I didn't save, you can give us a brief update on this item.
Mr. Page?
I thank Councilmember Taylor that you highlighted it correctly, the plan will take about twelve months to complete, work with their Sheikans and all of their partners, and it's being funded using excess revenues from the business privilege license tax revenues that were set aside from the electronic sweepstakes in the Ruka areas.
And I think, if I may, Mayor, that's one of the important things to point out, you know, no matter what you feel about sweepstakes operations, one of the things that this council did was put aside some of the funding that we bring in from those sweepstakes operations and use it in communities for economic development, I think that caveat has come to fruition here today, and it's something that I'm really proud of, I think it's a success for our city, and ultimately, this plan will be a success for the south MLK and Waltown area, so without further ado, Mayor, members of the council, I move for approval of this item.
Second, discussion, Councilmember Burke?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, at the finance committee meeting, throughout our agenda, we had people we were hiring to do certain kinds of work for this city, and I emphasized to the city manager the importance of diversity, and to make sure that we look clearly, as I say also to Mr. Page, at the people who are doing the job, that they're accountable with our MWBE, thank you.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. C-13?
Item C-13, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a revised agreement with the Creative Corridors Coalition to allow a 10% down payment on the 10% match for the matching funds on the Martin Luther King Jr. Drive Streetscape Enhancement Project.
Thank you, Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes, I'd ask, Mr. Turner, if you'd give us a brief update on exactly what this is and why we're doing this.
Mr. Turner?
Mayor, members of council, this item would allow for the beginning of the design work on the creative corridors, partially-funded project to make enhancements to Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, the bulk of the money comes from STPDA money, federal money that comes to this urbanized region, the city is also putting 10% match into the project, and the total project is in excess of $3 million, but the design element is about $300,000, and the 10% match would allow for, or the 10% down payment on the 10% match would allow for the design work to begin, as I said.
And just a comment further, as we were originally looking at this process and partnering with the creative corridors, which we continue to do and look at, waiting on that additional dollars from it would mean that the design work would have to wait until that, and so what this allows us to go ahead and move forward with that design work, and hopefully as the process moves forward and they continue their fundraising, that they'll have the other portion that match, so that we can begin to see the work happening there in the community, I think the community's excited about what's going to happen and this moving in the right direction, so I move approval.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, Councilmember McIntosh?
Since this is federal money, and if we do not carry through on a project, we'll hold this back, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, any sense that we're in any danger of that, is there a discussion with Creative Corridors, that we feel pretty confident that they're going to fulfill that?
They'll be able to come up with the other 90%.
Good, thank you.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Item C-14?
Item C-14, consideration of items relating to the city's legislative program for the 2015 legislative session.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yeah, first off, let me say good evening to, we have quite a few high school students here tonight, so obviously some teacher required, late requirement for the semester, but we're glad you're here tonight. Fourteen-C is part of our agenda that we go to Raleigh with, as far as what we're going to advocate for, I have always had concerns about the ability to attend meetings via video versus in person, I think there's something to be said for being here in person where we can interact, so I'm not sure who to ask this question of, I look at our city attorney, can someone explain to me what we're doing here, and how we're going to do this?
This particular bill, as you mentioned, is included in the city's legislative package for 2015, and basically, this would allow councilmembers to participate in a city council meeting remotely through electronic means, and we've discussed that being a method by which the councilmember who's not present can be seen as well as heard, but if this bill is enacted, council will come back and adopt rules that have certain provisions relating to how in fact it will be conducted, the meeting will be conducted remotely, how the person will vote, and so forth, but the whole purpose of this would be to allow a councilmember who may not be able to attend, because maybe they're not feeling well enough to come down, but can participate remotely through electronic means, through Skype or something like that, where they can be heard and seen during the course of that meeting, and voting would occur where the person can be also seen and heard in terms of voting, and the public can see and hear that person as well.
Would it only be if they're in, could they be anywhere in the world, so to speak, and do this?
It'll be up to the council to decide whether or not they have to be physically in the city, or can they be outside of the city, there's this general authority for the council to ultimately decide the rules and so forth later on.
Do you know of any elected body, and I'm going from Washington to Raleigh, that allows electronic type of participation?
Yes, there are a few communities down, any smaller communities that allow it.
Okay, thank you.
So, tonight, we're simply seeking authority to do it, but the city council will make the final decision on how to do it, if they chose to do it in the first place.
That's correct.
Councilmember Adams, and then McIntosh?
This is just a more of a procedural question, I guess, we were just down in Raleigh, working on a set of goals to advocate for municipalities, this is a set of goals that we are, as a city, are going to bring directly to Raleigh to advocate for?
Right, we always have, or the city always has its own set of goals, sometimes similar to, sometimes distinct from those of the league, but these are the goals for the city of Winston-Salem.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I just want to, we just received an award for being number-one in digital technology, I think what Winston-Salem is doing is, again, we're just not, as Ms. Burke or Ms. Councilmember Burke and Councilmember Montgomery would say, we're not resting on our laurels, we're already ahead of everybody else, there are some cities that are doing it already, but I think this is another step that we need to take, I know, for instance, when we have councilmembers, we're no different than everybody else, we become ill, it becomes more than just being able to be here, and one meeting, it may last a month or two, we have people and loved ones that leave us, and we sometimes have to take time off or go deal with family members and children, I think it's only appropriate, because we still want to serve, that we should be able to do this in this capacity, so I support this, wholeheartedly.
Councilmember Taylor?
Well, I was going to say almost exactly what Councilmember Adams just mentioned, I support this piece of legislation, I think as our community continues to grow and advance and expand, we have to keep up with the times, we just received an award for being number-one in the country for mid-sized cities on how we deal with technology, I will say that one of the things that we can't predict is our health, you know, we can do what we can to be as healthy as we can, but if something were to happen to one of us, I still believe that each and every one of our communities deserve a voice and a seat at the table, regardless of where we are in the world, so technology is something that's trailblazing, and we've got to get on board, so I support this legislation, but I do understand where Councilmember Clark is coming from.
Is there a motion on this item?
So moved.
Second. Motion second, discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Motion passes seven to one, Councilwoman Clark voting no. Council will now go back to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following, there's an item regarding the city council's January 2015 meeting schedule, there's an item making recommendations for appointments and reappointments for boards and commissions, as well as a public comment period, the public comment period is a time set aside for citizens to voice their opinions on matters germane to city government, and when the comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes for the comment period, and we'll limit the comment period to a total of thirty minutes. Now, maybe we have the first item?
Item G-1, consideration of city council's January 2015 meeting schedule.
As you know, there's really a very light amount of items coming from the planning board, so the recommendation was to actually counsel the January 5th meeting of the city council, what's the pleasure of counsel?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion second, discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Item number two?
Item G-2, mayor joins recommendations for appointments, reappointments to boards and commissions, A, Citizens Police Review Board, Jerry Silver and Vivia Thomas, both appointments with terms expiring April 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, Councilmember Montgomery?
Particularly on this item, I'd like a comment on the history of our police review board, just in light of all that's happening in our communities, I think it's important for individuals to know that what we have done in this community when it comes to citizens' oversight, I don't know, Mr. Page, would you be the one to?
No.
Or Chief? Mr. Andrews, this was adopted many years ago, Councilmember Burke, but Mr. Andrews can give us just a very brief comment about?
Mayor, city councilmembers, good evening, Al Andrews, City Attorney's Office, the Citizens Police Review Board, of course, is a body of citizens appointed by you from recommendations from the mayor to sit and to listen to mainly appeals of matters from the citizens of their interactions with police where they've had a complaint, when they feel like their matter needs to be continued on appeal, the body will hear that, but they also hear a regular report from the police department, primarily from the Professional Standards Division, Internal Affairs, or others, about what's going on within the department, and their following of their rules and regulations, and what matters have been determined by internal checks and external concerns and complaints. The body was created a number of years ago in response to concerns within the city, and this organ, this your body, was very forward-thinking in creating this organization to address the citizens' concerns, and they have met continuously all those years, and they continue to do so, of course, in the media, recently, we have seen situations where there have been concerns about actions by law enforcement and interactions with citizens, and this body is well-positioned to receive concerns or complaints that are raised by citizens, and to review those, and to comment, and to be interactive with the technology changes that happen, our department, of course, our police department, is very forward in its use of cameras, for instance, and those matters are brought before the board to be reviewed and complaints, and those things are ready to be reviewed by the board for education and commentary.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews?
And I just wanted to have that opportunity for citizens to hear, because, one, I believe we have a grand police department here in the city of Winston-Salem, we have learned from many things that have happened in our community, and I think just for citizens to know what exists in our community, and for all of us to understand where we are as a city is important.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to say that the mayor and I, we will be stepping forward in behalf of this council to let the public know exactly what we are doing, because too often, people are not well-informed, they're misinformed, and I've asked, we have the city manager, to put together some information that he will be bringing forward, we're not going to ask for it tonight, but it is being prepared, and also, we're going to make not only our citizens aware of what we're doing, but also our Mr. Cooper, our North Carolina Attorney General, and also that committee who has, the President of the United States, has appointed a chairman to talk about things that communities need to be doing, and as I said to the city manager, we'll step ahead, now, we're not perfect, people will criticize us, but we are a step ahead, and those of us who've been in government and who came to meetings, and up here, I only see Ms. Adams, who was one of the ones early on when we were talking about citizens' review, and how to move our city ahead, and how to have citizens' involvement, and the mayor was right along here, too, because Burke mentioned it, so I just want you to know, all of you, and the citizens in this community, we're transparent, we're stepping forward with what we do do.
Thank you, and I certainly agree with Councilmember Burke, we've been talking about this kind of chronology of what's happened, I remember the night that this police review board was created, I think Mayor Corning actually broke a tie that night to approve that, so we've been very forward-thinking, way back. Councilmember Bessie?
Yeah, and this is one of those things that helps provide public confidence, the opportunity to request and have an objective review of concerns regarding the department, it was a good idea when it's formed, it's still a good idea, unlike Councilmember Burke, I was not on the council when the board was approved, but if my memory serves correctly, I think the first time I came down to speak to the council that I was not on at the time was to speak and support the formation of the board that night, so.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor, as Councilmember Burke said, we have come a long way for the city of Winston-Salem, Councilmember Burke, you're right, it was early 90s when we felt the need to have a, in place, or a group that gave us another platform for review, it wasn't that, you know, again, everybody sometimes jumps ahead and thinks that, you know, law enforcement is bad, law enforcement is here a part of the judicial system to serve and protect, when this happened back then, it was a host of citizens here in Winston-Salem who are still trailblazers here in the city as we speak, and as Ms. Burke know, and the mayor, we weren't met with a, at first, with open arms, because everybody thought it was going to be detrimental to the city and the police force, but as you can see, how long it's been, and the fact that other cities don't even have anything like this in place to deal with issues when citizens feel that they need to have a platform for review, I've read some of the material that is being circulated as to how to improve communities and relationships with our law enforcement, and I think one of the areas, as Councilmember Burke and the mayor know, that I've been passionate about, and they have too, is community-oriented policing, I believe, just like, I'm seeing a rewind of the tape from twenty years ago, or fifteen, of these ideas that people are saying that we need now, that we had, that we got away from, and I think we have an opportunity here in Winston to be a benchmark for all the cities in the United States.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you, next?
Item B, Historic Resources Commission, Chad Gadberry, appointment term expiring June 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you.
Item C, Loan Committee, C Douglas Atkinson, reappointment term expiring December 2017, Lee Bagley, reappointment term expiring February 2017, and Kevin Cole, reappointment term expiring February 2016.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Item G-3?
Item G-3, Public Comment Period.
This is, as I mentioned earlier, this is a time once per month that the city council invites citizens to address it on matters that are germane to city government, and we would ask speakers to come forward and give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Person signed up tonight is Joanne Allen.
Good afternoon, Joanne Allen, P.O. Box 284, 27102, I am encouraging the residents of Winston-Salem to become more involved with activities of the city and county government, you can no longer sit back in the comfort of your homes and think that all the people currently in office actually have your best interest at heart, I would like for everyone who is listening tonight to ask any councilmember these questions, number one, why would the city government sell the Lawrence Joe Coliseum for eight million to Wake Forest, and then two weeks later, with the aid of the county government, give Wake Forest a total of eight million dollars of our tax money to build a parking deck of five hundred parking spaces, and call it a good investment for the city? If any organization could afford to build its own parking deck, Wake Forest Baptist Medical Center would be it, Mayor John stated, and I quote from the Winston-Salem Journal, "The project would pay for itself with the new taxes from the new taxes from the new Mayor Jones stated, and I quote from the Winston-Salem Journal, "The project would pay for itself with the new taxes from the new building, and the city would net new tax revenue. We would have gotten the tax revenues anyway." So once again, whose best interest do you all have at heart? Who's going, question number two, who's going to receive the benefits of the streetcar that the city government continues to support when common sense prevails that a streetcar will not even benefit one-fourth of the residents in Winston-Salem? A prime example at hand is the West End Street Trolley. The residents of Winston-Salem are truly paying the price to keep it going. Question number three, you also need to ask the city government, why sell the Bowman Gray Stadium to WSSU when it is a revenue maker for Winston-Salem? Just because Winston-Salem University is a predominantly black university does not mean that everyone black would be okay with it, especially when this city is already in major debt. I don't care if you are black, white, or other, we don't need for the council to make deals in order to pacify blacks or any other group of individuals. What Winston-Salem need is strong leadership. Question number four, why have each council member recommend someone to serve on the panel to oversee and monitor the bond money? Why not compile a list of neutral observers and have them oversee and monitor what city government is doing with the bond money? Individuals would feel more trusting of neutral observers. Last question, please explain to everyone, how is it that the mayor and the mayor pro tem has become millionaires plus over the past thirty-five to forty-some years being in city government, but Winston-Salem is now ranked number two in the United States as having more poor people living in poverty? Once again, whose best interest is at heart? I would like to also recognize and give tribute to Mr. Alexander Bell, a longtime city employee with the sanitation department. Mr. Bell, you came before the city council with your concerns last year with no response from the city government. Although you are no longer physically with your, with us, your spirit lives on. I would continue to make sure that your voice and efforts was not in vain. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Anyone else like to be heard tonight? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period. Councilmembers, I thought it might be good tonight, since we are going into the holiday season, there'll be a number of changes in our trash pickup schedule to ask our sanitation superintendent, Mr. Johnny Taylor, to just comment briefly on the revised schedule so our citizens will know all about this. Mr. Taylor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And members of the council. I'm here tonight to speak briefly about the holiday schedule. Of course, we just came through our Thanksgiving holiday, and now we're heading toward Christmas. So just a couple of things to keep in mind. For Christmas, we'll be pulling one day forward. So anyone who's usually collected on Tuesday will be collected on Monday, and the Friday of that week will be pushed to the following Monday. For recycling, it'll be a red recycling week, and so you can count on Monday through Wednesday to be the normal schedule. And Thursday and Friday will be postponed one day, which will push Thursday to Friday and Friday to Saturday. Yard waste will go like this. Monday and Tuesday will be collected on Monday, Wednesday on Tuesday, and Thursday on Wednesday. And so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do a weekend to get it all up. And what you have to do is make sure that everyone knows to just pull theirs out a day early. If you have a problem, we're gonna take care of you.
Yeah.
That's the thing that we want to stress to everyone. Also, we'd like to mention briefly our progress on the leaf collection program.
Thank you.
We have been very fortunate this year as far as the weather is concerned. We've collected about eight hundred loads beyond what we had collected to this point last year. Quadrants four, one and two have had two rounds of collection. We're currently in quadrant three, and we will have quadrant three completely collected for the second round by Wednesday or Thursday of this week. And it's my hope, if the weather will hold up, that we will also have quadrant four, their final collection completed before Christmas with the possibility of getting into quadrant one. So I'm very pleased with the progress that staff has made. They've spent a lot of time and effort. They've done an outstanding job. Our vehicles have healed up, and we have been blessed with great weather.
Yes.
Great job, Mr. Taylor. And of course, the changes to schedule will be on the website, as well as, I assume, we'll probably have something in the paper about that as well.
Yes, sir. We'll have all of those changes posted.
Wonderful. Mr. Taylor?
If I may, Mr. Taylor, I think you did an excellent job of explaining it, but sometimes the things work better if they hear it a second time. So if, Mayor, you don't mind.
Yeah, that's fine.
The holiday trash collection schedule is winter.
Let's do it again.
Yes, sir.
Take notes, or something.
Your collection day will be pulled forward for your garbage. Tuesday through Wednesday, Tuesday will be collected on Monday, and so forth. Friday will be pushed to the following Monday. Yard waste, Monday and Tuesday will be collected on Monday, Wednesday will be collected on Tuesday, and Thursday on Wednesday. Recycling, you have Monday through Wednesday will be your normal day, Thursday will be delayed one day, and Friday will be delayed one day.
Makes sense.
Make it seem so easy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Thank you so much for the, for the great job on the leaves. I think we added, what, how many different more trucks that we got out there this year in equipment?
We have ten automated loaders out there now, along with twenty-eight pulled behind us.
That's great. Doing a great job with it. Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
Yes, I was just going to say, since this is our last together.
Yes, ma'am.
City manager, would you like to say anything to the citizens, just as the mayor can say something a few minutes, the citizens in behalf of us?
Thank you, Councilmember Burke and mayor and member of the city council. I would just thank all the citizens for their hard work, working with the city government. Everything we do, we can only do with the citizens. As we go into the new year, we strive to work to make sure that we provide quality services to all our citizens at a low cost and a high, and a high rate of effectiveness.
That's a good point, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of the city council to wish all of our citizens a very happy holiday and safe season, and we've had a great year in the city of Winston-Salem, and we, I certainly don't think the council agrees. We thank the voters for joining with us in a partnership to approve the bonds that we brought to the voters, that we can do a lot of good things for the city over the next several years. We're already starting with that. So on behalf of the council, happy holidays. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, we adjourn.